Called order the regular meeting of the solving city council for September the 12th, 2016. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Zimmerman.
Present.
Councilmember Skid.
Here.
Councilmember Deuce.
Present.
Councilmember Jamison.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here. Will you stand with me for the pledge, please?
Place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had a scheduled presentation, but the recipient of the presentation isn't here, so we'll table that until the next meeting. City managers report.
A few things to report. One, for the month of August, our customers were down 30% on their water use from the base year, which is for a total of the first eight months of the year, we're down 28%. So they're still doing well on conservation. In honor of one of our employees, Julie Glenn Danning, celebrated her 10th anniversary with the city this past month. She's in our finance department. And then just a reminder that Danish Days will be here this weekend, so lots of parades and road closures and good food and fun. So come on out.
Sounds good. Public communications written or verbal? I have speaker slips, Fred Koval. Oh, let me read the introduction here. At this time, please direct comments to the solving city council regarding the consent calendar items or matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers limited to five minutes. One speaker slip is Fred Koval.
Evening, city council members and mayor Fred Koval, solving. This has to do with NOAA weather predictions. And what I printed off for you today, just to have a single copy, is the predictions for October, November, December, followed by November, December, January, followed by the next three month cycle. And what I was looking for is the trend in precipitation. And the first one shows that we're garbage, 40% chance of below normal precipitation. Normal is a 33% band either side of zero. This is 40%. So it's just slightly negative, okay? But what is the trend? If you look at the second picture, it shows that the trend increases to a larger area, okay? And of course, all they did is just...I use a browser that's not Google to find this. And then the final three-month period shows that that particular trend doesn't change. In other words, it's still at that 40% below, okay? Sort of disheartening, I would think. But it's just not looking good for the general area right now, nor is it looking good for the next four months. So we have to really start thinking about the worst-case scenario. And that is, what are we going to do for water that may not be coming from our river wells? May not be. I hope you're pumping those two river wells really good right now, because certainly the parent district, Bruce Wales, according to the Santa Barbara Water District, since he borrowed some extra water out of the lake to be replenished, that he was a borderline criminal in his actions, which I thought was pretty nice, pretty unique. I think Hagemark needs to get an equal treatment when it turns terms of some kind of a moniker for him, which I'm thinking about. Okay, here it is.
Thank you, Fred. I have no other speaker slips. Does anyone else wish to come forth? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is council comments and requests. Would you like to start, Mr. Zimmerman?
Sure. Welcome, everybody, tonight to this meeting. And no real comments, other than I'm really surprised that Danish Days is already here this weekend. Time flies. Anyways, I look forward to seeing everybody out there this weekend and to a good meeting tonight. Thanks.
Mr. Skid.
I'm going to make my usual comment about Lake Kachuma, which is now down just shy of 106 feet from fall and about 7.2% of capacity. And if you want to take a look at something that's really pitiful, you ought to go up to the vista point overlooking the dam and take a look at the Kachuma Pond. It's getting... And the water that Mr. Wales did let out, the 11,000 acre feet, which the...went into the aquifer all the way downstream, but as an indication of how dry the aquifer was at 11,000 acre feet, surface water did not meet...reach the H Street Bridge in Lompoc. And it did get to the gauging station, which is on the bridge, so there was water in the gauging station, but the water did not get to the surface. It barely made it to the...I call it the Ocean Avenue Bridge. It's the bridge at the east end of town that we're...next to where the Greco plant was. So that water really soaked into the ground very well. Hopefully, we got a lot of it in our aquifer on the river. But even so, unless something really happens big time, you aren't going to see any water coming...releases out of that...out of Kachuma for quite a while. Then now going on to something a little bit more pleasant, is we are having Danish Days coming up again. It should be nice weather. And for people who are new in the valley, come and see our Danish Days. It's usually a nice day, days, weekend. We have good food, pretty good entertainment, very good entertainment from our local band that goes rides on the beer wagon. And it's just really nice time, especially if we have some nice weather, as long as it doesn't get to 105, which it has in the past. But it's supposed to be relatively...it's supposed to be in the, I believe, into the high 80s and maybe low 90s. But so come out and enjoy this for Danish Days. And that's my comments.
Mr. Deuce.
Thank you. We...Carla and I went over here to the fire department yesterday for the 9/11 remembrance. It was interesting. There wasn't very many people there, maybe eight, nine, something like that. There was one lady, though. She was a flight attendant for United Airlines. She was supposed to have been on Flight 93. She broke her leg two days...four days before she was in the hospital having surgery. A good friend of hers filled in for her. So, you know, there was a lot of stories, and so it was kind of unusual to hear one right here on the apron in solving. I was disappointed that there weren't more people there, especially, you know, people representing the city. I think, you know, this is our fire department. They put it on. I think they need to be supported. Let's see, second thing I want to talk about is pre-Danish Days. We're refurbishing the wind harp, restoring it up at Lutheran Home at Adredig Village. And we're going to have rededication on Wednesday at 4:00. And then, yeah, everybody come to Danish Days. You come down Saturday night for the street party. It's over at the...over at, what is it, parking lot number two. Beer Garden will be open. We'll have some...have a band or two playing. Come down there and have some free fun, except for the Beer Garden. And those are my comments.
Mr. Jamison.
Hans, I agree with you about more people should have been at the fire station yesterday. I went last year, and there were two of us. And I think maybe as a city, we need to try to encourage people to come to that ceremony. I don't think we should ever forget that day. Nobody knew about it, okay? It was in the newspaper. It was in the local newspaper that it was going to happen. So you need to read the local newspaper. And I don't know how else we can do it, except maybe...maybe in the water bill for the little note, September 11th celebration of the fire station, because it is a nice remembrance. And I think one of the firemen was actually deployed to New York City with his dog, maybe?
O'Brien.
Babar Dog.
Gordon. No, he wasn't...he wasn't...
Oh, he didn't go with the dog.
Didn't bring a dog, but he was there.
Yeah, so that's...And Danish Days, it's always delightful. It's always fun. It's always silly. We get to...we get to all pretend like we're Danish for three days, right, Eddie?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And I guess the village that's usually in the park is going to be at the Elveroi this year. Is that right?
The what?
The Nordic Village that's usually...
They aren't coming.
Yeah, they're not coming.
Oh, they're not going to come at all now?
That's too bad. One individual showing up, but that's it.
Okay, okay. But everybody try to go to the Elveroi, because they have great craft things going on there. It's really...it's very educational. Take your kids. They'll get a kick out of it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm actually surprised to hear that there was a crowd at the ceremony, because I've been there several times, and there hasn't been but two or three people show up for that ceremony. And I have to beg forgiveness for not being there yesterday or Sunday, so... I do want to comment on the...for a special reason, and you'll understand why I'm going to comment on it, is the car show. It was a wonderful turnout. The streets were packed full of people and packed full of cars. And the reason I mention that is I lost my car keys. So if anybody finds my car keys floating around the city someplace, I would appreciate you letting me know.
Where is your car?
So at the car show or somebody, I don't know. I was hoping somebody would take the car, but they didn't, so...
I'll take one more.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm done, actually. Thank you.
I did forget to mention one item, that within the last week to 10 days, two individuals that have contributed quite a bit to the valley, unknowingly, two number of people passed away. Mr. Joe Ari passed away recently, and also Swinell, a longtime contractor who...whose business installed a good portion of the brick sidewalks you see in town. And they both passed away within the last, I believe, week and a half. So that's...both of them are going to be missed. And that's my final comment.
With that, any more comments? Okay, on to the next item. We'll be correspondence we received. We didn't receive any. Well, we did, actually. We received one from the Rotary Club thanking us for our contribution to the fireworks.
Yeah, I'll put that in next month's packet.
Approval of the agenda is presented. I'm going to reserve a little bit of time for that. If...I'm expecting guests here to discuss the soft order ordinance. And if it gets to be ladies, I'm going to ask that we move item 11 forward at some point in the time because of the seriousness of the item. On to the council minutes of August 22nd. Are there additions, changes, or approval for the minutes of August 22nd? Can I have a motion?
I saw move.
Second.
It's moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's four ayes and one abstention. Passed. Next is the consent agenda. Is any of the items do you want to pull off the consent Seeing none, they're going to have a motion accepting the consent agenda.
I'll move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Deuce.
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Skid.
Yes.
Councilmember Jamison.
Yes.
And Mayor Richardson.
Yes, that was a pass with a 5-0. On to the regular agenda. Arlene, item seven.
Item seven is the Tahigus Resource Recovery Project status update. Receive an update from Santa Barbara County staff regarding the project.
Status report. Staff report. Not status, staff.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and council members. I am Mark Schleich with the County of Santa Barbara Public Works Department. And with me tonight is Leslie Wells, the project manager for this project. We'll be providing a brief overview of the project to get you back up to speed on it. And then Leslie will be talking about more of the current activities that we've been going through regarding the project and moving forward. And throughout, please interrupt me with questions if you do have any. For the city of solving, we provide you with many services, primarily landfill operations and management. The waste from your community ends up at the Tahigus landfill. We provide services for the community at the San Diego Valley Recycling Transfer Station for those that self-haul their material or have contractors working for them. We provide recycling...oh, excuse me, I got a little confused. State reporting, curbside recycling contract management, public outreach education, household hazardous waste collection events that are also held over at the San Diego Transfer Station, and a green business program where local businesses are, based on their waste reduction, water conservation, and other types of business practices, become certified and green business program. And that annual event is held over at the Marriott. This project here actually started when we expanded the landfill last in 2002. At that time, the Board of Supervisors said that they were not going to look for another permit for greater expansion of that site, and that directed us to figure out ways to basically make that permit last longer by finding more opportunities for reuse and recycling. Also during that timeframe, the Foxton Canyon landfill was an operating landfill, and it closed in 2005. And that's when the San Diego Transfer Station went into effect. So with the current landfill, we have...with the current rate of disposal, we have until 2026, and then the permit runs out. But when we look at what we're burying out there, 60% of it has some reusable component to it, whether it be recyclables, traditional recyclables that are in there, or what's called organics, food waste and things like that. And I'll talk a lot more about, or we'll talk a lot more about, the organics and how they become more critical as far as a waste management practice. So as I said, this was primarily to extend the landfill. And as we've been working on this project since 2002, aggressively since 2009 with various technical reports, the state's passed several laws regarding waste management. The first was that we needed to go from a 50% goal to 75%. It's not a goal that's imposed upon communities like the 50% goal was. It's a statewide goal, and that's what they're striving for. So they've adopted additional legislation to help them get there, such as mandatory collection of business recyclable and organics, planning for organics disposal as we go forward, and then a lot of things related to greenhouse gas reduction requirements. And they continue to come, as I think the governor just signed a bill late last week that was going to try to do additional greenhouse gas reductions. So the state not only has passed legislation, they've also tried to help us solve this problem. And they've done statewide need for waste processing infrastructure, you know, how much do we have, how much do we need, and where might that happen? They produced a Cal anaerobic digestion strategic initiative. Anaerobic digestion is common in wastewater treatment plants, but now it's also being used not only there, but in waste management. And it's a similar process where the material is broken down and methane gas is captured and turned into fuel. There's 11 AD facilities that are currently doing this in the state, and there are about nine undergoing permitting, of which we are one of them. As far as MRFs go in the state, there's about 150 of them statewide and continue to grow. And they not only process what's called your clean co-mingled recyclables, the source separated, but now they're also doing more of the mixed waste processing of that. And it's just using the different technologies in a different way. In regard to our project, we recently went to the Board of Supervisors for a...the first step of our contractual relationship with the vendor, as well as the certification of the EIR. And as part of that, actually Cal Recycle sent us a letter of support for our project. So what's the Resource Recovery Project, you're probably asking at this point? I talked about there 60% of what's currently going in the landfill, or that's in trash, in your trash can, that's has a reusable component. 30% of it is your traditional recyclable. So the first process is to kind of sort the recyclables out from the organics from what's left. And so we get 30% of co-mingled recyclables in the anaerobic digester instead of burying that organic fraction in the landfill. That then creates methane that we then create or seeps into the atmosphere. We're actually going to do it in a controlled environment. And then what's left is still 40%, which we're still trying to figure out what to do with. Here's a little simple picture of how this all works. Here's your trash can, goes through the facility. 30% is digested by an anaerobic digester. It creates not only energy, but ultimately compost and green energy. The rest is off to recycling markets, and then 40% continues to go to the landfill. At this point, I think I'm going to turn the presentation over to Leslie Wells to talk a little bit more about the details of the project and a lot of the stuff we're currently doing.
Good evening. So what we've put together is a large project team. Ultimately, we've chosen MSB investors to be the developer of the project. What this individual has done is put together a really well-qualified team. You're going to recognize some of these names. Deani Construction would be the contractor to build the facility. VDRS would be the equipment provider for the material recovery facility. Marburg Industries, that operates on the south coast, would be the operator of the material recovery facility. Bicon is a firm out of Germany, and we would be using their anaerobic digestion facility equipment. And then Nursery Products is a local California company that would operate the AD facility. In addition, part of this project team has included a subgroup, including staff representatives from each of the participating jurisdictions. We've also used several consultants to conduct due diligence of the project, including ARI Engineering, HDR Engineering, DEI Consultants. They all reviewed the engineering and technical side of the project, and then HF and H Consultant reviewed the financial portion. So as Mark explained, this has actually been a nine-year procurement process. We began by developing the subgroup, including staff from all the participating cities. We then put together a request for interest from the different technology providers. We distributed a request for proposals. We received five responses and ultimately selected our vendor, MSB Investors. MSB stands for Mustang, Santa Barbara. So you may have heard us refer to Mustang in the past, but they are now called MSB Investors. As Mark mentioned, we have completed the SECA portion of the project. To date, we've presented over 130 presentations on this project to just about anybody who would have us in their boardroom or their living room. It's a pretty bipartisan project, and it's been a lot of fun, just educating people. Seem real interested in their trash and what opportunities are available to just putting it in the landfill. And as I mentioned earlier, we have done multiple in-depth financial and engineering reviews. So as Mark Schleich just mentioned, in July was kind of a pivotal meeting for us at the board. They did certify the EIR. The deadline for submitting any lawsuits in opposition to it has passed, so we're assuming we're done with that portion of the project. The board also received initial results from our financial advisor on the feasibility of publicly financing the facility. And I'll provide some more information on that a little later in the presentation. The board also approved a waste service contract between the county and MSB investors. However, there were several conditions precedent within the contract, meaning the contract won't become effective until these list of items go into effect, one of which is getting material delivery and service agreements enacted between the county and any of the participating jurisdictions, as well as county financing. So the question comes up, if we're looking at publicly financing this facility, what kind of risks are we facing? I mean, this is kind of a scary project. It's $110 million. You know, is this something that's really a good idea for us to pursue? So there were a number of different categories of risk. The first is technology risk. Our original RFP included all types of technologies, included pyrolysis, acidification, the anaerobic digestion, the material recovery facility. While some of these more thermal-based technologies may present options in the future, at this point, the technologies just aren't really available on a commercial scale in the state of California, nor is the state ready to permit these kinds of facilities until we have a much better understanding of the air emissions associated with this kind of a facility. So what we ended up choosing were much more proven low-risk technologies. The Murph equipment provider that we chose, they have equipment in over 500 facilities worldwide. The anaerobic digester, Bicon, which is out of Germany, has 19 facilities currently in operation, and over eight that are currently in development worldwide. So another question that has come up, on the south coast at least, is concern about what is the condition of the material that comes out of the anaerobic digester, the compost? Is that something that could potentially hurt the project if we're not able to market it? So I wanted just to highlight that the vendor has built into his pro forma a pretty comprehensive screening process of the material after it is composted. And so they are projecting to meet the state composting standards. In addition, we have a financial penalty, so it kind of becomes a financial incentive for the vendor to make some real financial investments in making this material meet the state specifications. Lastly, and I think what makes us feel the most comfortable is in our pro forma on the revenue side, we've put no value for marketing the compost. In fact, we have a negative value for the cost of transporting the material. So if we are ultimately, worst-case scenario, unable to market it, it's not going to hurt the financial pro forma of the project. So if we are ultimately, worst case scenario, unable to market it, it's not going to hurt the financial pro forma of the project. So in answer to the question, what happens if, you know, the mousetrap doesn't work or something were to happen during construction? So we have asked the vendor in their going to provide and right now our risk manager as well as the risk manager from city of Santa Barbara has been kind of poring over, we've asked for construction and performance bonds during the construction and operational period of the project valued at the cost of constructing the facility as well as performing, operating the facility for one year. We also have vendor warranties, insurance policies, liquidated damages if certain performance guarantees are not met. We've also defined a protocol for the development, for the vendor to develop a compliance plan if any of the performance guarantees are not met. So another potential risk is financial risk. So we're going to have twenty-two year bonds. So we're looking for service agreements with cities to make a twenty-two year commitment to use the facility because the bonding folks want to have the delivery of material committed over the same period of time as the length of the bonds. Another potential financial risk is the change in recyclables value. Right now, the value of recyclables is considerably less than it was last year. It's about twenty percent less. So what we've done is a good part of the value, recyclable value and the sale of energy offsets almost all of the operational costs of the facility, which is really excellent news. But we're wanting to make very conservative assumptions so that we're not exposed to any kind of volatility in these recyclable markets. So again, we made very conservative assumptions in our pro forma for the value of the recyclables. We're also going to be developing a rate stabilization fund of five million dollars so that we don't have to change the rates to our rate payers to ride the market of the recyclables because we all want to have pretty steady rates for our rate payers. We've also built in the last year of financing, which is about nine million dollars in reserves. Another potential financial risk would be we're anticipating a certain interest rate right now. And when this project is ultimately financed, that that interest rate is subject to change. So as we were working through our negotiations on the waste service contract with our vendor, the cost for private financing just kept increasing and that vendor was pushing more and more of the risk back onto the public participants. And so we were feeling like, well, if we're carrying the risk, why are we paying a premium on private financing? Because typically you would expect the private financer to take a lot of the risk. So we hired a financial consulting firm to look at the proposed cost for the project as well as the impacts on our division, the Resource Recovery and Waste Management Division, and come up with a projected cost for the facility. And ultimately, we ended up with a thirty percent reduction in the cost to the rate payer using public financing. So to demonstrate in our RFP, we had asked for anyone proposing on the project to come in with a tipping fee of less than a hundred dollars per ton. We also had an additional twenty-two dollars at that time, twenty-two dollars and forty-one cents of additional costs associated with managing the facility at that site for a total cost of a hundred and twenty-two dollars. At the end of our negotiations with our vendor, we were closer to a hundred and forty-six dollars per ton and that was, we felt, was just too high. So as a result of looking at the model, using a publicly financed scenario, we're looking at a total cost of a hundred and five dollars per ton, which is significantly less than even what we were considering in our RFP, which we released in two thousand and ten. So what is the, what does a tip fee of a hundred and five dollars mean? Our current tip fee at the landfill is eighty-seven dollars per ton. So when a rate payer gets their trash bill approximately sixty percent of that bill is related to the cost to collect materials from homes or businesses. That covers the cost for trucks, containers, drivers, fuel. About forty percent is the cost for the tipping fee to either dispose of the material, process recyclables, or process the green waste. So we are anticipating compared to today's rates, it would equal a five dollar per month increase to the rate payer. So in terms of what our next steps are, we're currently in negotiations with the cities of Santa Barbara and Galita because they represent approximately a little over about fifty-five percent of the waste flow. And then the county represents another, it's like about thirty-six percent. So we're working with them first because they're kind of the major trash providers to the facility. We've been meeting with them since June and we have, we're hoping to be our final negotiation session scheduled for September twenty-first. So we're hoping by, certainly by the fall, that we'll have finished up those material delivery and service agreements with those folks. We're also looking to Solvang and Buellton, who are the other two jurisdictions that currently use the Tahigus landfill to enter into agreements with us. Assuming we're able to get these agreements in the fall and we're able to release the funding package to get lenders before the end of the calendar year, construction could begin as early as twenty seventeen. Our vendor's made quite a bit of progress with the permitting agencies already. He's been working, he already has his air APCD permit. He's, we've submitted an application to Cal Recycle for our solid waste permit. So we're making quite a bit of progress there. We're not expecting a lot of lag time there. And that hopefully the facility would be operational in early twenty nineteen. And that concludes our presentation. If there's any questions.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Skid? Couple of questions. Currently, the Tahigus is for Santa Barbara, Galita, the South County and the Sanz Valley. Lompoc, they are handling their own waste recovery and they're working on their own project. And I believe Santa Maria is doing the same thing, is that correct?
Mayor Richardson and Councilmember Skid, yes, that's correct. So Lompoc has their own landfill. I hesitate to come up with a number, but the last I heard, it was like they had thirty years worth of capacity. They don't accept waste outside of their own waste shed. Santa Maria is in the process of getting the permits to construct a new landfill just, I think it's south of Orchid.
And the other question I have is that you, at the beginning of the presentation, the current, I understand the current permits go through twenty twenty-six. And so with the proposed facility, that will allow hopefully an easy extension of our capacity to the, to the county. And what, what kind of timeframe are we looking for that this project will carry through? For, how many years can we expect before we'll have, have to start looking for alternates for our landfill at Tahigus?
So Mayor and Councilwoman Skid, that was actually an excellent point that we didn't put in our presentation. I wish we had, so that's correct. The current permitted capacity that we have at the Tahigus landfill, we believe will get us to twenty twenty-six. With, depending on when this facility is up and running, originally it was anticipated to give us an additional ten years. So that would get us out to twenty thirty-six. How we've structured the contract is that the vendor is to continually be making upgrades. So at the end of the twenty-year period, this, this facility is not going to be in poor working order. It's going to be working very well. And so material can continue to go through that facility after the twenty years. The question will become, what do we do with the residual? Do we want to expand the existing landfill? Do we want to send it to another landfill? Is there a new technology that we could use to process that material? So there's a number of opportunities that would present itself at that time.
So currently if, sorry about that. If everything goes right and we can get started in twenty seventeen and up, and operation by twenty nineteen, we will still be looking at approximately sixteen to seventeen years of operational use at a minimum. And hopefully we, the technologies will improve so we get better recovery of recyclables and less items going to the actual landfill.
Mr. Zimmerman?
That was part of my question also. So now is it privately owned land that's leased to certain company or how's the land, who owns it, I guess?
So Mayor Richardson, Councilwoman Zimmerman, right now the Tahigus landfill, it's located on the Gaviota Coast area and it's owned and operated by the county of Santa Barbara Public Works Department. And so the facility is proposed to be built on that landfill land. So it's county owned property, so we're not really charging for the use of the land.
Gotcha, okay. That's all.
Any other questions? You failed to mention Carpinteria. What is their process?
Mayor Richardson, so right now Carpinteria is very close to the border of Ventura County. And so they actually use a Ventura County trash hauler as well as Ventura County processing facilities and the Tolan landfill. So we've certainly talked to them, but they have a long-term contract with this Ventura company. And they're using the Ventura facilities right now.
And then you mentioned negotiations for financial planning. And you're negotiating with Galita, Santa Barbara and Santa Barbara County extensively. And then how are we going to be included in that, in the financing in that case? If, are we going to, we have a seat at the table during negotiations or not?
So Mayor Richardson, what we're negotiating is basically service contracts. So it's sort of like a hauling contract where what we're negotiating is if the county is going to own the facility, we're the ones who are going to finance it. You all don't have to finance it. What we're asking in return is that you commit to use that facility at a prescribed tipping fee for the next twenty years. And so we're envisioning you guys would have the exact same contract as the cities of Galita and Santa Barbara would have. And you would have the same tipping fee and you would make the same commitment for twenty years.
And would that be hauled out of, out of our, our transfer station or is it going to be directly hauled to Tahigus?
Mayor Richardson, right now it's hauled directly to Tahigus. The trash that waste management collects on your collection routes gets hauled directly to Tahigus.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Yes.
Then what about the things that we do take to the transfer station? How do they, do they, is that considered just going down to Santa Barbara also or down to Tahigus?
Councilmember Jamison, yes, that is, so the transfer station, the San Ynez Recycling and Transfer Station. We also have one on the south coast. Those are also county owned and operated. So we will, we will be bringing that material to this project as well.
So those, the fees then that we pay to, to the facility up here will also increase?
Correct.
Mr. Deuce?
Yeah, talk about the county. Describe the, or the geographical limits on the county. Meaning, do we include Orchid, Los Alamos, Cuyama?
Mayor Richardson and Councilman Deuce, that's actually, it's a great question in that New Cuyama actually does come to Tahigus right now. And that's largely because Marburg is the hauler that goes out to that community and they basically do a loop and they've got to come back to the south coast anyway and so they tip it at Tahigus. So in terms of the boundary, right now, unincorporated waste north of San Ynez in the Lompoc Valley, unincorporated area goes to the city of Lompoc landfill. And in Orchid, Los Alamos, Gary, those areas currently goes to the city of Santa Maria landfill. And we are not proposing to take that material to this facility. However, it's an opportunity in the future if we needed to. But we recognize that would impact our partner communities who depend on that waste to run their facilities. But it is an opportunity that's available if the need arose in the future.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I, I just need a clarification. Okay, so we have a construction company. We take a ton of waste, that's an exaggeration, but we take a ton of waste and it costs us eighty-eight dollars now if we dump it. And then there are different types of dumping that we do. And if we're organized and we have it all sorted, we get a break. But now that same amount is going to cost us a hundred and five dollars.
Councilmember Jamison, at this, I'm going to say yes, but that hasn't been finalized. So we have prepared a financial model and what we've got to look at is what we don't want to do is lose material to competing facilities. So you don't want to price yourself out of the market, right? So one type of, of material is franchise material. It's collected by your hauler and they need to bring it to a destination. The transfer stations are a different beast. Someone has an option of where they want to take it. There aren't a lot of options, but there are options. And we don't want to price ourselves out of the business. So that's actually something we're looking at right now. If we decrease the cost of the transfer stations, then we have to increase the cost through the franchised waste. And we don't believe that there should be any subsidies, certainly. But we also don't want to lose a lot of material that ultimately could negatively impact the facility. We're not looking at a major discount and maybe like eight dollars less or ten dollars less, but it definitely, the price is going to go up in the, at the transfer stations.
Okay, another question. Mr. Skid?
Another question.
There's, there was another comment. Councilmember Jamison, Mark Schleich was just saying that, that what this facility is designed for is more like municipal solid waste. So something that an insurance company generates or a restaurant or you would generate at your home. Construction and demolition debris is kind of a different animal. So that's going to be lumber, rocks, gypsum, wood. That kind of material, we're not going to necessarily want at our facility. It's not good for the automated equipment. It actually can damage it. So it really depends on what the waste material is. If it's mixed waste, it's going to be charged the mixed waste fee. If you bring it in source separated, it's going to be less costly.
The other question I have, I'll make, ask the question then make a comment. The question I have is, we have, as you say, we have the transfer station on Fox and Canyon. At this time, if an individual say is working in the valley, say somewhere between, an equal distance between Fox and Canyon and the Tahigus landfill, are the, is the Tahigus landfill open to smaller individuals? That would be like a construction crew that would be hauling mixed waste? Would they, would it be, is the Tahigus landfill open to those people? Or are they being, or will they be required to go to the transfer station?
Councilman Skid, no, they're able to come to the landfill. They are now. You have to set up an account ahead of time, but we have a lot of contractors that, and you know landscapers, different companies that have accounts with us at the landfill and they just go there directly.
Okay. And then the comment I'm willing to make is I was involved in the multi-jurisdictional solid waste task force, which is long, which for many years. And I remember going to many meetings where you were talking about the various new high-tech solutions that they were proposing. And I was, at that time, I was a little leery of some of those proposals. And I'm glad to see you're going with something that is a little bit maybe less low-tech but a proven system. And that's my comment on that one.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I've got a question and let's look at the other side of the cost. What, what would it cost to open a new landfill? Tahigus is full, we got to, you got to do a new one. What kind of cost? And just give us a ballpark idea.
So Councilmember Deuce, a new landfill hasn't been permitted and built in the state of California in ten years because nobody wants it in their backyard. So it's hard to come up with a number. What we've done quite a few times is what does it cost to take your material to another facility, for example? And because we're kind of in western California, the transportation costs to other landfills can be quite high. The landfills at Lompoc and Santa Maria, their tipping fee is very similar to ours, which is fairly high. I would anticipate another landfill is going to cost at least the same amount as what we're proposing as a tipping fee just because the amount of regulations and the control equipment. the control equipment that's currently required. And in Mark's presentation, he explained all the new regulations, so we can't really compare it to the status quo. We can't say, well, can we find something else that's $87 or cheaper that's a landfill? Because the state's requiring us, very, very soon it's going to come, that they want 75% of organics out of the landfill. Like, there's going to be bans because of the methane generated from it. So we've got to account that there's going to be higher costs associated with, what are we going to do with all these organics? You know, we have one composting facility in the entire county of Santa Barbara. There's a real lack of processing infrastructure for organics. And so I think no matter if we choose an existing landfill, we build a new landfill, the cost for waste management is going to go up in the future just because of these new regulations. And I'm sorry, I can't answer specifically how much it would cost to build a new landfill.
Thank you. You've done a very fine job with the presentation.
Great, thank you.
Got fully a lot of our questions answered. There's no more. Thank you very much for your presentation, and we'll accept, we'll accept the status. Thank you. Yes. Thank you for that. We have no time for public comment. Is there anybody who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, then we can bring it back to the council for discussion, any discussion.
I just have a comment. I remember a number of years ago, the Borgertel family owned some property up in the Los Alamos area, and they wanted to create a new dumping site up there. And that was just becoming a nightmare due to the costs. So I think this is probably a better solution for right now. But I do think sometime we're going to have to find another site. And theirs was quite large. It was going to last quite a while. So maybe it'll come around again.
Thank you for that. All right, on to item eight. Would you read the title, please, Arlene?
Yes. Recreational Marijuana Urgency Ordinance: Discussion and Direction on a Potential Urgency Ordinance Prohibiting Manufacturing, Processing, Laboratory Testing, Labeling, Storing, and Wholesale and Retail Distribution of Cannabis.
Staff report.
Yes, hopefully this will be much more boring than anybody anticipated. You do have an election coming up in November, and there's initiative on it in regards to, a lot of people call it non-medical marijuana, whatever, I mean, it's on the ballot. If the ballot measure passes, there are some things that we'll have the ability to regulate. The ballot measure itself goes into effect on the day after the election. Practically speaking, we don't have to have our hair on fire about that because of two reasons. One, the state licensing process is going to take probably another year before anybody can get a commercial process, you know, business going. So we would have plenty of time to get regulation done. The second reason is that in other areas of potential regulation, nobody can get established in grandfathered rights. So if somebody starts personally growing marijuana outside, and you eventually come to the conclusion that you don't want anyone to be able to grow any marijuana outside, you can pass that ordinance, and it's in effect, and nobody has grandfathered in. So it's not like there's going to be a parade of horribles if we don't have anything in place the day after the election. I do recommend an urgency ordinance, because that will allow us to continue to address the issues without having our hair on fire. The way the urgency ordinances would work is the first one lasts for about 45 days, and then you follow that up with, we haven't solved the urgent need to address this issue in the meantime, so we'll extend it for another year, well, another period of time totaling one year. We actually would have the ability to extend it a second year if necessary. I strongly suspect that whatever regulations that we want to think about and pass upon sober reflection, pun intended, we'll be able to get that done within the first year. But this would allow us to have your planners look at it from a planning perspective, allow your sheriff's department to give all of us advice from a law enforcement perspective, and to consider all of those things in due course, rather than immediately grabbing some one-size-fits-all ordinance that got passed someplace else, therefore we're going to pass it here. So I do recommend an urgency ordinance, you'd have to pass it if you want to by a four-fifth vote. But that'll give us the opportunity to address this slowly and carefully, and do it right, and do it for solving, instead of just doing it the way everybody else is doing it.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the staff report? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for action. I sent a copy of the Santa Maria moratorium recommendation. Have you been able to chance to?
We stole that.
I'm sorry? Is that stole?
We stole that, yes.
Very good. Then, then if there's no other comments about that, I'd like to see us come back with, with an emergency ordinance to, and including that, that moratorium that you have purloined. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Would you call the roll, please, Arlene?
Councilmember Skid?
Yes.
Councilmember Jamison?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Deuce?
Yep.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes, and that passed with a 5-0. On to item number nine.
Item nine is donation of an artificial quote "all-light" end quote decorative tree for solving park.
Staff report.
Good evening, council. My name is Fred Logman. I'm with the Parks and Recreation Department. And tonight I'm going to be discussing a possible donation of an artificial all-light decorative tree for solving park. It's titled a Megatree, and it is essentially, as you see in your picture, a tree made of strings with lights attached. And a local citizen recently approached the staff and offered to donate this Megatree for use in the solving park tree planter during the Yule Fest season. Its proposed size is 23 feet tall and 10 feet wide at its base. It comes with 4,500 multicolor LED lights. Those are static lights, not with chasing effects. And the size of the tree would require the use of stabilizing guy wires, which may have to be attached to the ground outside the perimeter of the existing tree planter. The gentleman who approached us, and I did discuss the possibility of guy wires in the nearby trees, like the tall sycamores just to the west, but it is best thought that they would have to be extended to the ground just outside the tree planter. The Parks and Rec Commission did have a chance to review this proposal August 15th, and several pros and cons were discussed. And the main ones are featured on your staff report. The pros are that it's big, bold, impressive. It's a donation, a possible long-term solution, also a possible one-year solution if it was selected and then chose or preferred to have something else in its place. It is obviously drought tolerant, and it is a new concept that we have not spoken of before. The cons, the biggest one being its daytime appearance. If you have seen one of these types of trees before, they are in several yards around the valley during Christmas, you're just looking at strings and a pole at that point. It's non-traditional, and so you don't have the benefit of the ornaments, the guy wire intrusion I spoke of, and does it fit the necessary small-town feel of the most Christmasy town in America, or one of them, as Time said many years ago. Ultimately, though, the commission felt that the new concept might be a welcome addition to the park and the Yule Fest season. We have also recently researched the concept of a large living cut tree for the planter, having spoke to two trees, not distributors, but the Agen Family, the Agen Family Tree Farm, as well as the local hardware store. And to give you an approximate number, a 12-foot-tall noble fir tree can be purchased locally for approximately $240, and we can even achieve an 18-foot-tall noble fir, which can be attained for a cost of $700. Both of those would be living trees, although cut, and then put into the ground. And that is the staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions to the staff report? Mr. Skid?
Question on this one. This, if I remember right, down by Nielsen's building material for a number of years, they put this type of, I believe it was this type of tree. I don't think they used the LED lights, but it was still the pole going up and the strings going down. Is that what we're looking at for this particular, except we are going with a higher-tech LED lights?
Correct. As a matter of fact, Nielsen's building material will be purchasing a new tree from the same citizen who's wants, wishes to donate here.
Okay.
I got a question.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Why don't we have a living tree there? Did we at one time have a living tree?
We've had several.
Two, three, four, five of them?
Yeah, we've had several, and the last we put in was for the Centennial in 2011. But the drought and other circumstances caused it not to flourish, and so since 2012, we've been doing a living forest, as we've been calling it, putting in the cut trees.
Gotcha.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we've killed at least four trees down there, haven't we?
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
I have one speaker slip. Tracy?
Mayor, council members, Tracy Farhad, Solvang Conference and Visitors Bureau, and a member of the Yule Fest Committee. We've been working with Parks and Rec closely for many years in trying to establish a larger Santa Village. We've been very excited about that. We have Santa coming to visit two solid weekends, and through our collaboration, that village keeps growing a little bit. Love the Nisa cutouts this last year, that was a huge hit. For years, we've actually also heard from folks, both residents and visitors, expecting a little more of a tada factor. And so I was very excited to hear about it. The committee thought it was a wonderful idea, worth trying to accept the gift, and many have enjoyed Mr. McGreal's lights and his Christmas spirit, and the fact that it's in his wife's honor, I thought was a really wonderful, special thing. So we just hope you'll consider it, and, because we've also talked about it for years, of how we go get something bigger, and the expense was quite elaborate. So, and it was a lot higher than just the $700 at the time, too. So anyway, we've, we hope that you'll consider this a new tada factor. I don't think it'll hurt the small-town feel. And yes, nothing seems to grow and last very long in the planter. The dancers can still widen their circle and get around the tree, and we could make sure it's well protected. I trust Parks and Rec a lot for that. So anyway, that, we just wanted to let you know that the committee was in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other speaker slips. Anyone else wish to comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Who wants to speak first? I'd like to say that in my mind, at least until the drought is over, it'd be a wonderful thing to accept that donation. No telling when we'll be able to have plenty of water to keep a tree nourished, and I think that that's an adequate substitution for that, for now, at least.
Well, even what years, we seem to be able to kill them pretty good.
Right.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm really a traditionalist, and, but I like the size of this. I like the thought of a 22-foot tree. It becomes something that's significant. And so, yeah, let's give it a shot. It could be, it could be worth doing.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that can, that can be a motion.
Is there a second to that motion, or more comments?
I'll make, I'll second, and I'll also make a comment in regards to this. It's one of those things, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained. And for us to get a tree that was either 22-foot tall, cut, is going to be a very large expense. And if we plant something and it survives, which is debatable since last, it looks like we've had a black thumb in there for the last couple of years, it would still take a tree probably 20 to 25 years to grow to that 25-foot height. Because you, you can't, you try to transplant, because I know we had one, we transplanted in from some, and it's some individuals who had a fairly large Colorado blue spruce from Fifth Street, and we tried to transplant it over there. And it was a very nice tree, but I think that it was dead within probably three to four months. The trans, you can't, you can't transplant that large a tree in there and hope it, and hope that it survives. And like I said, we, it looks like we have the Black Hole of Calcutta for planting new trees in the, in the existing.
I wonder, I wonder, instead of selecting noble firs, is there's a Danish tree that might survive? Oh, it's been moved and seconded. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Councilmember Skid?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jamison?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes, and that passed with a 5-0. Fred, the donor, does he remain, wish to remain anonymous?
I don't believe so.
She just said his name.
Is the name here?
No, Tracy said it.
Yeah, Tracy told. It's Mr. Mike McGreal of the Creekside Neighborhood.
Ah, very good. Oh, he, yeah, nice guy. We want to thank him publicly for that, for that generous donation. Because, and I, I like to emphasize that the folks that donate to the city are very special people, and we really certainly appreciate whether cash or in-kind donations is fantastic. And I want to thank him. Thank you. We're going to move item 11 up next, instead of item 10, for the water softener discussion. So would you please read that, Arlene?
Introduction for the First Reading by Title Only of an Ordinance Revising the Solving Municipal Code Title IX, Chapter II Sewer Code to Add Residential Water Softener Restrictions.
Would you, the staff report?
All right, is this on? Good evening, Mayor Richardson, council members, Matt Vander Linden, your Public Works Director and City Engineer. And I thought it might be just helpful if I made a couple quick comments in regards to the drought comments. So staff has already been looking at the long-range weather forecasts, and will be coming to you in November or early December with our water supply recommendations for 2017. But things are looking really good. Our customers and residents have been conserving really well this year, and the previous supplemental water purchases we've made have been helping us out a lot. And as you may recall, last year, or, well, this time last year, we did our water supply planning for 2006, 2016, initially assuming only a 5% allocation, and we got the 60% allocation. So we're basically banking quite a bit of water in the San Luis Reservoir right now, and so we're looking really just fine for 2017, even though we do anticipate the rainfall to be only about 75% of normal. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that in there, let you, let you know we are on top of it.
Can I ask you a quick question regarding Fred's suggestion about pumping the river wells first? Is that, is that a plan?
Yeah, we have been running our river wells longer hours for the last several months, longer hours than normal, and we're trying to maximize the use of that, the river underflow while it's available.
Very good, thank you.
So anyway, I wanted also start by saying, it's sometimes been said that we don't have a water supply problem, we have a salts problem. As you, as you're aware, we have these gigantic oceans around the world. The surface of the earth is two-thirds water, but we can't drink any of it, and it's really a salts problem. And that's also the problem we're having at our wastewater treatment plant. So as you may be aware, we have a permit through the state, through the State Water Resources Control Board, to operate the wastewater treatment plant. And that permit has discharge limits. So right now, there's only three constituents that are identified in our permit that we have limits on. And one is TDS, or total dissolved solids. The other one is sodium, and the third one is chloride. So those are the three constituents specifically stated in our waste discharge permit. And, and those are, those, we're having, we're having trouble with all three of those right now. And I wanted to also kind of give you a little bit of history. Back in 2012, the city council implemented non-residential water softening restrictions. So at that time, in 2000, I'm sorry, 2002, the city council restricted all non-residential brine discharges. So basically, all the restaurants, all the commercial businesses, all the industri- So basically, all the restaurants, all the commercial businesses, all the industrial, uh, businesses in Solvang are not allowed to discharge, uh, brine waste into the sewer system. So if they do have water softeners, they have, they, they must have the canister type, the ca, uh, the exchange tank type, uh, water softeners. So that occurred back in 2002. And so that has helped us, uh, uh, in regards to these, um, discharge, uh, limits that we have for the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, in addition to that, we, we have state water. State water is very low in TDS compared to our local ground, groundwater. And by bringing in state water, that has also helped us, uh, at, at the other end of the pipe, basically down at the wastewater treatment plant. And, uh, so, uh, you, you may be aware, from 2002, when we first started, um, taking a, first, uh, receiving state water, through 2012, we were using a high percentage of state water every year, and kind of a lower percentage of, uh, local groundwater. And, uh, so what's happened now in the drought, uh, we've, we haven't had the state water available, and we've had to rely more on our local groundwater sources. And in, uh, so, um, so that, what, what's happened then is we're, we're using water that has a higher TDS and, uh, or is harder. So the, when you, when you hear TDS, you can think of hard water or soft water. So it's, if it's high in TDS, it's hard water. If it's low in TDS, it's soft water. So, uh, of course, the residents, uh, many of them prefer having the soft water. And, uh, when, when we're supplying more, when the water that we're supplying is harder, then more salt is used by this, uh, self-regenerating water softeners to soften, or well, to re, regenerate the, the, um, water softening units. And all that salt ends up into the sewer system and down at our, our sewer treatment plant. So, the, the drought has had a negative impact on, or, or resulted in an in, significant increase in the salts, uh, loading going to the wastewater treatment plant. And, uh, uh, we recently completed our water supply management plan, where we, where we're looking towards the future and on our various water supply sources. And the water supply management plan is recommending that during the wetter years, we, we utilize our local, uh, groundwater sources more so that, so that we can bank the state water. And so that we have more state water available when we enter the next drought cycle, which is going to come eventually after we get out of this one. But, uh, so, uh, uh, and then we can rely more on, uh, and have that state water available during those, during those droughts and not have to, um, purchase as much supplemental water like we have these last few years. So, uh, with that, basically, um, uh, this, this, uh, additional salt loading, um, on the wastewater treatment plant uh, is going to produce a long-term detrimental effects to our groundwater basin because, uh, we have percolation ponds out at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, that water that's now higher in salts content is being treated, and all the, can, uh, all of the, um, organic contaminants and things are removed and treated, uh, out of that. But the mineral, the minerals like the salt and sodium chloride are still in the water that goes into the percolation pond, and then basically back, uh, to recharge our groundwater basin. So, um, I also wanted to mention that, uh, back in 2011, this, this report was, uh, prepared, it's our salt, salt management program, our salt management plan for the city was prepared, uh, it's a requirement of our permit with the state for us to have prepared this. And this was prepared back in October of 2011. And this report identified that, um, that 65% of that increase in salt loading uh, is coming from the residential water softeners. So basically, the water that we're supplying our customers has a certain amount of mineral salts in it, of so, sodium chloride naturally occurring. And, uh, so that's the water we're supplying to our customers through our water system. But the water that's flowing into the wastewater treatment plant, the salts level is nearly double. And so that increase, uh, this study has determined that approximately 65% of that increase is coming from single-family resident, well, residential water softeners. And that's, uh, equivalent to approximately 400 pounds of salt, um, per day from residential water softeners. 400 pounds per day. So that's, you know, 365 days a year, so it adds up. Anyway, so, so based on that and our water supply, the recommendations of our water supply management plan, staff is recommending that this, uh, that the city council consider revision to, uh, our sewer code, Article C specifically of Title IX, Chapter Two. And, uh, that the code be revised to mitigate the degradation of the San Andres groundwater basin and assist the wastewater treatment plant in compliance with the regional, uh, board discharge limits. So, staff also recommends implementing a water softener rebate program. Uh, what's proposed is an 18-month program, beginning in, um, January 1st, uh, 2017. Uh, it's, it's estimated that we have approximately 600 homes in Solvang that have this, uh, self-regenerating water softeners, the salt-based, uh, water softeners. Uh, we, we don't have an exact number on that, but, uh, based on the, the studies we've done, uh, and the salt loading to the plant, kind of working backwards, uh, we know that, um, uh, a, a, a single-family home with a salt-based, um, water softener produces about, um, 20 pounds of salt per month. So anyway, working backwards, we estimate we have about 600 homes with the self-regenerating water softeners. And, um, the grant pro, or the rebate program rather, would, uh, be designed to, uh, assist approximately 200 of those customers, the first 200 that, um, that come see us. And, uh, we're also recommending that that program be implemented with a, a mid-year budget adjustment. So, uh, I wanted to mention, we basically have, uh, really three, just three alternatives. We have, um, dealing with the salt loading through, uh, restrictions on the, the self-regenerating water softeners. Uh, the other two options are removing the salt, uh, removing the salts at our wellheads. So we could put, um, you know, large industrial-sized water softening units at, at three or four of our wells, uh, at, near the wellhead to remove those salts. Um, that's really expensive. If you, if you do that at three or four wells, you're talking about, uh, somewhere between one and $2 million to do that. Uh, we could also address it at the wastewater treatment plant. We could do major, uh, upgrades there. That's even more expensive, more on the order of $2 million to do upgrades there to deal with the, the salts. Uh, but whether you treat it at the wellhead, at the front end, which is typically, uh, less expensive, or if you treat it at the wa, at the tail end, at the wastewater treatment plant, you still have this, um, concentrated brine waste that you have to, um, uh, get rid of. And it's, it's ongoing forever, you know? Uh, uh, this brine waste that you've got to get rid of. So that's very expensive, uh, on an ongoing basis, year after year, to have to haul that off or somehow get rid of that. So, so we felt that the water softener restrictions were the logical, uh, next sort of incremental step. And, um, I wanted to also mention that after some more recent internal staff discussions, uh, we, we recommend that the existing automatic water softeners, uh, the existing ones be grandfathered in, and the ordinance be revised accordingly. And, uh, and then the new restrictions, uh, go into effect, um, on November 1st or, or very soon. Uh, but again, existing, um, homeowners, residents that have the existing units, they'd be grandfathered in. The regulations would apply only to the, um, any new installation of water softeners. So, the regulation would prohibit, uh, salt-based installation of any new salt-based water softeners and, um, but continue to allow the canister-type, uh, portable exchange tank, uh, water softeners. So, our customers still could choose to, uh, have water softening if they want, um, but they'd have to use the, the portable exchange tanks. So, um, that concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, okay, actually you answered my one question, cause I wasn't sure if we already had a prohibition on the self-regenerating water softeners. But obviously, we do not. Uh, the next question I have, I think, if I remember it, when we did our discussion back in 2011, uh, there was also a discussion of, uh, instead of using sodium chloride in the self-regenerating, uh, uh, water softeners, that, uh, I believe a number of locations were switching over to potassium chloride. I assume that would take care of the sodium, help on the sodium end of it, but probably doesn't help on the chlorides coming through the system. And then, next question I'm going to have, and I actually see somebody with a Culligan jacket out there, and he might be able to answer my question better than I can. In the, uh, when they have a, the Culligan type where it's a
Yeah, the exchange.
Exchange. Uh, the, the, the salt that is, because obviously, it's the same basic principle they're utilizing the salt. And so, is it the water that's actually coming through the water softener that we're using that is causing the problem? Or is it the self-regenerating where they have, where they, they build up the brine in the softener and they have to get rid of that? And that the Culligan and the re, uh, the exchange type, they have, wherever they take their cylinders, they have it, have it set up where they, they have a proper disposal of the brine? And, am I correct on that one? Okay, the gentleman from the Culligan, he did shake his head on it.
They can, uh, they'll have an opportunity to come up in a minute, and they can probably, they, they understand the technology better than me. But, um, but yeah, my understanding is, uh, there's resin beads in the water softener unit that do like an exchange of ions and pull the calcium, I guess, mostly out of the water. And so then, you've, uh, once those resin beads are all basically bonded with the calcium, they go through a regenerating cycle, and they get washed over with, uh, with the salt brine solution that pulls off the, the calcium, and that all goes in the, in the sewer line. So, um, so it's, so when you have the salt-based units, you have the container with the rock salt that you put in there, that, uh, gets, um, mixed with water like a slurry, uh, and washed through the canister, past the resin beads, and flushed in the sewer system.
So just, it's like, it's like
Salt, right, it's the right, it's a
It's like dumping, basically like dumping seawater into our
Yeah, like 10 pounds of salt in the, in the, rock salt in the thing means 10 pounds of salt eventually in the sewer line down to the
Any other questions?
Yeah. The 600 homes that you've estimated, uh, is that only Solvang, or is that part of San Andres, uh, Service District? Or how, how, how do you guys differentiate that?
Well, that's a good question. The 600 is what we just estimated for here in Solvang. But, um, uh, and unfortunately, uh, the, the, the wastewater from the San Andres Community Services District gets blended in with our water, you know, before it gets pumped over into the treatment plant. But, um, but our understanding is their, uh, salts content is comparable to ours, but slightly less.
So how do we regulate on that? If we implement that here in the city, can we impose that on the district?
Well, yeah, that's a legal question, but we did discuss that, and my understanding, and Roy can elaborate, uh, is we can't really impose that, cause we have a contract that doesn't like really speak to that. But, um, but we can ask them, and they understand. Uh, if they're paying for upgrades for our plant, if they're sharing in the costs, and they don't do something to help us, and that means more costs to them ultimately, you know? So, so one of the recommendations was to ha, ask the city council to direct staff to, to write a letter or work with them, and request that they, uh, implement some kind of similar, um, restrictions.
Any other questions, or do you want to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to do a little bit of parade of horribles, so that you understand that this isn't something that the, the, either the city or the San Andres CSD can choose to ignore. Because, um, communities that are ignoring their, their restrictions from the state water board on, on their sewage treatment plant permits are paying huge fines and paying huge upgrades. So, the, the people that are using the sewer system are, are going to pay to solve the salt intrusion problem, I'll call it, from my perspective, one way or another. And, uh, as we listen to, um, Mr. Vander Linden, the, the other ways are very, very expensive. And so this is a way to, uh, get the salt problem reduced to a manageable level at, in a way that's much less expensive to the ratepayers than any of the other alternatives. Uh, there are some things we can do with the effluent that comes from the CSD. Um, but ultimately, uh, in addition to the, our ability to regulate the quality of the effluent that comes in, all of those people who pay rates to the CSD, cause they, then the CSD ends up paying us, if they don't help solve the problem, then they're going to have to pay for those more expensive fixes. Cause the, the state isn't going to make things easier on us as time goes on. The state's only going to make things harder on us. We're going to get more restrictions, and the restrictions we have will be tighter. Just think of the, um, chromium 6. It used to be 100 parts per billion, and now it's 10. So if, if we anticipate that the state and the feds are going to continually, um, move the bar on us, it's way better to get started now in dealing with it. And you'll save, um, many hundreds of thousands of dollars in either fines or compliance costs or legal fees.
I hope there's something we can do about CSD, because they just expanded their territory.
Yeah, and if we have 100% of our community here, or the city's cutting it out, and we have, you know, their usage going up, just they get a 50% break on whatever fees, if they do end up going up, it's just essentially gets split up against all of us, but we're not participating in it. So, maybe we need to think about seeing, like, how to regulate or, or gauge the salt, the brine from the district.
As I said, the contract does, um, require that the, the district en, enforce, uh, such rules and regulations, et cetera, forget the boilerplate, but in regards to the effluent. So, we can get there. But it'd be much better to get there through these voluntary
Of course.
processes, uh, than, uh, imposition, because heck, our customers don't like things imposed on them. I mean, I get that, cause I live in a place too. And so whenever something is imposed on me, it doesn't feel good. It's just easier to be objective here where I don't live. And, but, yeah, we can do those things. But this is the first step in getting, getting started, so we can avoid the parade of horribles that, that I listed. Thank you, Brad.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Vander Linden?
I was just going to add one more comment, uh, as, uh, Mr. Hanley mentioned. Um, we've already been notified by the regional board that, um, we're going to have nitrate limits when our permit is renewed next year, our waste discharge permit. So they're already planning to add, uh, a nitrate and ammonia, which contains nitrogen, um, limits, uh, into our permit. So we already know that they're ratcheting up. They've already gave us, they've given us fore, a, a forewarning, so.
Thank you for that. I've invited, uh, representatives from, uh, Rain Water Softening Company and from Culligan here to, to give us, uh, their viewpoint and to tell us about the pitfalls and the advantages of going away from water softeners, and I've asked, uh,
And I've asked, uh, uh, Don Decker and John, uh, Van Spacken, is that you? No, I guess he's not here. Uh, so, Don, could you come up and, uh, and, and take a few minutes and, and tell us what, what we discussed on the phone about, uh, about the advantages, disadvantages and the pitfalls and the, and the, uh, good and bad about eliminating water softeners?
Well, the bad thing is you're gonna have a lot of people upset and that's the way it is.
Put your, go right to the microphone, please.
The bad thing is you're gonna have a lot of people upset that they have to change something. The way the exchange tanks work, and, and he did a good, um, he did an explanation of it. We bring out an exchange tank and water flows through that tank. It only gives you so many, so many gallons of water. Once it's done, you're out, you know? If you have a big family, this is the problem you're gonna get, is when you have five or six people in the family, they're gonna be, they're gonna go from paying thirty-nine dollars a month to eighty, ninety dollars a month. And, um, our company, Culligan, is going through the same, you know, you guys are. We have to meet regulations for our wastewater. We haul our, all our, our water off. So I don't see anything going down in price, unfortunately. And, um, but the problems you're gonna have, and, and I do like this rebate program. I don't know where you, where you got it from, because I know there's been other rebate programs in other areas and they didn't do very good. But this one's pretty good. Whoever thought of this? When you have somebody remove a water softener and then put in exchange tanks in, it's a big difference in, in the water. You feel the big difference in the water. Because the salt systems meet your needs and, and I'm not, I know you have to do something and, and I'm just letting you know that there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of people that are gonna complain about it. Uh, they're not gonna be happy with switching to the tank service, uh, because it's just gonna keep going up in price is what it's gonna do. And, um, implementing the, the rebate is, is a good idea. I think it's, I think it's really good, to be honest with you. Uh, I like the way you, you did it for the three, you know, checking to make sure they've done it. I just hope, because I've been to a lot of meetings, I've been doing this thirty years, my wife's back there. Her, her dad actually started Culligan years ago. I hope if you do it, you actually do what you say you're gonna do, whatever it is. Because it affects everybody and it affects our business. If you put in these regulations and nobody does anything and they think, you know, the salt systems have to be removed or the ones that we can't put anymore in, just put it that way, I guess their grandfathered in, I wasn't even aware of that.
That's brand new to me too.
That's good, because a lot of people have spent five, six thousand dollars on these water softeners, you know? And then you're gonna tell them they have to get rid of it, you know, it's like, and I know it's, it's hard, but what happened years ago when they, when they did it in Long Poak, they took out all the water softeners and everybody went to Home Depot and Costco and put in these really inexpensive systems that put, instead of twenty pounds of salt a month, it's eighty pounds of salt a month goes into the drain. So, that's why I'm saying if you're gonna do it, please do the rebate or do whatever you're gonna do, but make sure it gets done. Uh, because I've been to a lot of these meetings through the years where they talked about it, but they never did it, you know? They even, you know, it's, it's hard, I know it's hard to, to police it, I know that. It's hard to police something like this, but, uh, it, it should be done. I mean, it's like he says, he's, somebody's gonna have to pay for it, you know?
Now, you, you explained to me that if we went to tank systems, that you would have difficulty in providing that service
Well
to the, to the citizens of solving.
Well, you know, you mentioned about one company taking care of the whole solving area and I think his numbers are a little low on the amount of water softeners that are here in the valley, so. I, I mean, just in my eyes, there, it's a little low. Uh, but, yeah, it would be a big difference, big cost to change, uh, to the exchange tanks and, um, it would be, yeah, it would be costly.
So you see, going from about five dollars a, a month, uh, regenerating cycle to thirty and forty and fifty dollars in tanks then?
Right. Uh, they're not putting the salt in the water softener and they're saving water, but
That's all the salt costs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you have soft water, and this is something that nobody likes to talk about unfortunately, and when you have soft water, when you have our tank service or you have a water softener, you're using less water in the home. Everybody's using less water. You don't realize it, but when you're washing things, they're coming, it's coming cleaner with less water, less soap and less water. And you gotta get a little credit that when you have soft water, you're using a lot less product in the house. A lot less bleach, soap, you know, fabric softeners, a lot, everything's less going down the drain into their sewer department. You know, so it's, there's good things and bad things about it, but, um, the, the exchange tanks, oh, I'm sorry, go on.
Yeah, I was just, you know, you're coming, when the, uh, salt-based units go through the, uh, the generating cycle, they're using water.
Right.
Right, right.
They're using water. Yeah.
Exchange tank, you're gonna use, use less
Yes, less water, yeah. It's a minimal, people see a minimal charge, uh, difference in their, in their rates, so.
Well, I have a question, does, is kind of off the wall here, but, uh, where do you, how, how do you get rid of your brine? You say you haul your brine off, where do you haul your brine to?
We, we used to take it down to Ventura, ninety mi- ninety-one miles away, uh, and it was costing us about a hundred and fifty thousand a year just to do that.
Now, what were they doing with the brine?
They were using it for their wells. They were actually diluting it with water to make it good enough to put in the ocean. They were actually, because it's better water than a lot of, it's funny, they were charging us for it, but they were using it.
Using, and their, their water was going in, it was gonna be, okay. Now, just out of curiosity, this is off, real off the wall. Uh, you know, up in the Bay Area, uh, it's a couple of salt companies, a lot, large number of salt flats out there where they make their salt up, out there by bringing in the ocean water and then letting it sit for about five years as the various evaporation ponds go through. Uh, is that, is that an option or is it just for the amount of salt involved in it just doesn't, not economical?
Not economical, yeah, to get it there. We, we did find, we're taking it to Laguna Sanitation, now it's in, it's in Santa, or Santa Maria, which is a lot better for us. I, I want you to take into consideration too, these tanks that are being delivered. Let's say we go to your house once a week and deliver a tank and it's, you know, fifty-nine dollars a month to deliver a tank to your house every week. It's not cheap. And believe me, it's, there's a lot in, you know, salt prices, water prices, delivery prices. It, it, it's a hit on us when we take the water softeners out. It's not just the customers, it's also on the, the dealers, like Rain and, and Culligan. And, and, you know, if there's other, other companies, but, yeah, it's, it's, it's expensive. I see it eventually not having them. Eventually, it's, they're gonna be too expensive to have, so then you're gonna have a real big problem here in the city because people are gonna just put in water softeners like crazy, because that could happen. I s- I see the cost of it just keep going up, as you mentioned it to me, I was talking to you on the phone. It's, 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 uh, not something we look forward to, so. Because we do have the same restrictions that you guys are having, you know?
Is anybody having any questions for Don? I, I should appreciate you coming in tonight and filling us in.
Thank you.
It's been very helpful. And, and, but by the way, it surprised me that the grandfathering, I think that's, uh, that gives a positive spin on what's
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that, yeah. That's nice, but, thank you.
Thank you. It, is the pain representative here, the Rain representative? I guess not. Then we'll go to public comment, Fred.
Two-inch Band-Aid on a six-inch wound. Mayor and city council members, Fred Koval. Uh, I understand the report, I understand the need. Uh, however, there's always two sides to every story and I try and do my homework well. The report is circular. We talk about state water. We're banking it. We used to use it to blend. Well, then, we're banking it when we need it, but when we need it, there's no state water. So, we don't get much bang out of our buck, no pun intended. So, uh, we never address the, the TDS. Where's the TDS coming from? It's not coming from the water softener, the regenerative water softener. It's coming from the wat- water you deliver. It just gets passed through. We're taking out the, the sodium and the chlorine, but the TDS is never explained. Okay? Not covered in the report. Only by, by saying that it's too expensive to make soft water at the well or somewhere else. But eventually, we're gonna have to do it. So why are we putting this tiny Band-Aid on? Community Services District. We got a contract, renegotiate the contract. Whatever you're gonna do to us, you better do to them. I can see a lot of lawyers looking at this with smiles on their face. You're gonna have to renegotiate immediately. Of course, I've said in the past, just give the whole job to them, let them worry about it and not us. Get out of the business. Percolating ponds. Yeah, we're sending water downstream, full of bios, loaded with bios for the downstream users. Let alone the chlorine and the, and whatever else we're sending down there. And by the way, we keep saying it's the, I think it's a misnomer. It's the alluvium water that we're sending downstream, not any other kind of water. Let's call it what it really is. So, you know, I look at this whole thing and I just hear Culligan putting it on the line, forty bucks minimum. If it's weekly, holy cow, what does that add up to? The minimum in ten years. In one year, you know, it's about, it's gonna cost the residents of this city three hundred thousand out of their pocket. That's the minimum, that's the math. Two hundred round numbers at, at forty bucks just a month for two people. If it was only a month for two people, it's two hundred and eighty-eight thousand if you think it's six hundred homes. Simple math. In ten years, three million dollars that you're gonna force on some of the residents. You haven't covered all the rest. And by the way, all of the regenerative water does not go in the sewer system. Does not. You cannot assume that. Nor do you have an accurate number in any shape, form or manner. And, uh, what I look at it is, hey, it was a back, it was a back-type calculation that was made as to how many people have regenerative water softeners. We have no idea what, what numbers, what the real numbers are. Nor did I hear in the report anything about what are the permit levels? Have we exceeded them? For sodium and for TDS and for chloride? Have we exceeded them? Well, I think I remember way back when, and I probably could look it up, we've already been exceeding those permit levels for years. I've never seen in this report any definitive numbers as to what are the levels? And what are the maximum levels imposed by the State Water Resources Control Board, if that's who the people that are? I guess they are. And then now what are you gonna do about nitrates and ammonia levels? See? So what's the solution? It's simple. Provide, at these high rates that are going higher, with a parcel tax coming, with higher rates from ID number one, with the fact that I can't drink the water, I just put in a new RO under my sink. Got it? You deliver up soft water to the residents of this city. That's the real ethical way to go.
Thank you, Fred. Mark Infuntati. Was that good?
Now you screwed it up again.
Never get that right. Mark Infuntati.
He should've run for mayor against you. He could, he could've never run against you.
I give up, it's okay, you know? Sounds like an exotic Italian car, I, I'll go along with it.
Uh, damn.
Quick comment to the side before I get to my point, um, to address Councilmember, uh, Jameson's comment about not showing up that all the city people should show up at events like the, the fireman's thing on nine eleven. I wish we had gotten an email. I mean, I'm on the BAR, my wife's on the planning commission, all the people in the councils, commissions and boards had gotten an email about that. You would at least had two more people at that thing. I, I didn't know about it. So, that is a request. Okay. With regard to the, the water softener ordinance. There, there's, there's a couple of questions I'll ask rhetorically, uh, for Matt to address as much as anybody else. First off, I didn't hear anything about whether they apply to people with septic systems. So, this is a sewer ordinance, so I assume they do not apply to people with septic systems. Okay? That's a question. And is there any consideration for saltwater pools that drain to the sewer system? And I ask this question because if you go take a look at Santa Clarita, who has an ordinance outlawing water softeners, they also have an ordinance that outlaws saltwater pools. And by the way, their ordinances carry a thousand dollar fine and a minimum of three months in jail. So they're very serious about their ordinance. I don't know that we wanna go that far, but I just thought I'd point that out. I called up my Culligan rep, because I have a Culligan system, and, and talked to the gentleman about what, what it would take to convert over to, because I didn't know about the grandfather clause, you sprung that one, I mean, thank you very much, I like that. And, and I started asking him questions about the exchange program and there's a couple of things you should consider before you start saying everybody should have an exchange tank. As the gentleman from Culligan said, you put in a couple of tanks. If you've got some guests over, you use excess water, you're gonna, you're not gonna run out of water, but you'll run out of softened water. So the water will keep coming, it just won't be soft at that point until they come in. Then you gotta be there all day long on the day they're gonna come by and pick up the tanks, if the tanks have to go indoors, or you gotta give them a key to your house or garage door opener, something that I'm not willing to do. Okay? Or you're gonna have to pay money to have them come by a second time and drop off the tanks. So there's an inconvenience to the tanks that, that goes even beyond the cost a little bit. The other thing about it is the tanks are conditioned with salt, not with potassium. For those of, those of you that have high blood pressure or, or, or have issues with, uh, migraines or salt skin issues, that's a problem. We use potassium in ours at our house to avoid that problem. Okay? Last, I'm sorry, yes?
You drink your softened water? You don't have a heart, you don't have a separate line into your house for untreated?
We have, no, 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 we, we've split the house and the house gets softened water, the yard gets untreated.
No, 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 in the house.
Inside the house, we have an RO unit
Oh, okay.
which she will drink.
Okay.
I drink regular, out-of-the-tap softened water myself and my potassium level's a little high according to my doctor's blood test.
Well, some of us have hard water taps in our house too. Just like you have, just like you have in your, your yard. It's just nat- you know, what I call natural water. It's not treated, yeah.
Uh, no, we don't have that inside the house, strictly outside. I would disagree a little bit with, with Matt's saying twenty pounds of salt per month. Uh, we're, we're only two of us, we don't use that much water. We, I'm sure we don't generate. I gotta tell you a little story. We bought the house that had a, one of the older soft water system, um, Culligan water softener systems in it. When we started considering all the things that were happening with the drought, we wanted to look at everything that was wasting water. One of them was our water softener. So the old system ran on a schedule. Once a week, it recycled and threw water down the drain, about fifty-five gallons a week. So we bought a brand-new system, we paid for it, we didn't lease it, we bought the whole system. And as a result of a sensor unit that's on the electronics now, it only recycles when it needs to. In other words, when the hardness gets to a certain level, I guess, is what it uses. And as a consequence, we've gone from fifty-five gallons a week to about sixty-five gallons a month. So we're saving about a hundred and fifty-five gallons a month of water. So there's that much water that doesn't have salt in it that's going down the drain, there's that much water that's not being wasted, period. And so I was gonna get a little upset at having spent some amount of money for that, and he was gonna say I had to get rid of it. But he grandfathered me and so I'm not so mad at Matt anymore. All right. But I still have another question for you. You're gonna have a rebate program and I wanna support what the city is trying to do. If septic systems are excluded, if I build If septic systems are excluded, if I built a dry well or a leach field in my backyard, disposed my water into that well, because it can't get to an underground aquifer, I don't have one in my house, I don't have one in the city for that matter. Do I get the rebate for the, when you get rid of your system? I'll just leave that as a question for you.
We'll let the city manager answer that question.
Well, first of all, all city limit, all properties within the city are on public sewer, not on septic.
Oh, no, 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 I understand.
Yeah.
If I just built, if I built a dry well, okay, I don't have to, if I don't go deeper than eight foot, I don't even have to get a permit. Built me a dry well on the side, piped my water softener discharge into the dry well. So that sixty-five gallons a month goes into the dry well, through rocks, goes out into the ground beneath my house or my yard. Okay? So none of the, I'm still on the sewer.
Yeah.
I'm not going off the sewer. Just getting rid of the discharge in the yard rather than the sewer. So none of the salts, none of the chlorides are going into your sewer system. Can I get the same rebate as somebody that takes out their water softener?
Well, we don't have the program yet, so I can't tell you that.
If you're going to do that, you need to have some kind of electric repellent that keeps the feds away from you because that's probably a violation of the federal discharge requirements, too. So.
See, it's not salt, see?
Well, the discharge of brine waste on your property is actually a violation of the stormwater regulations. So there's extensive state regulations already in place that would prevent that. You're not allowed to discharge anything like that.
If you keep the stormwater on your property, it stays within the, doesn't violate the stormwater.
Well, the stormwater regulations, just to remind you, are, one of the primary focuses of them is to treat stormwater as a resource so that the water replenishes the groundwater basin. Because now you have really, really soft water, you know, pure water coming down from the rain that you want to infiltrate and get into the groundwater basin. But, so anytime where you're accumulating salts in some kind of slump or something like that, you know, that's going to leach down over time into the groundwater basin. So it would be considered a violation of the city, the state and the city's stormwater regulations.
I want to say that your grandfather clause took the wind out of my sails. And I certainly appreciate that. Because we all, all of us who have already existing softwater systems understand the agony of taking them out or suffering the costs or suffering bruises in the shower, you know.
Sure, sure.
From the hard water.
So I just wanted to respond to Fred Koval's, a couple of his comments. Certainly, a citywide water softening RO system or whatever would be better as far as producing higher quality water to our residents and higher quality effluent that'd be able to discharge from the wastewater treatment plant. But, you know, I've been here almost six years now, and the repeated thing I hear from members of the community and from the city council is they want the staff to work our best to keep the water and sewer rates down. And so this was envisioned as an incremental step. It is true. Ten, fifteen years from now, you know, the regulations may change. You know, I think we reported a few months back, the state, the Regional Water Quality Control Board here has started the process of looking at the total maximum daily loading of contaminants on the Santa Inez River. And nitrates are considered one of the top contaminants. And so that's why they've already told us that that's going to come into our waste discharge permit. So we don't know exactly, we try to anticipate and project where the regulations might go and try to be prepared as best we can, but we don't have a crystal ball. And so whatever the city council directs staff to do, we will do our very best to implement it in the most cost-effective and top-quality manner that we can. It's up to you to decide and tell us. I'm not trying to sell this as Matt Vander Linden's, you know, program. It's, the staff are trying to really keep the city out of trouble with our waste discharge permit and protect our groundwater basin.
Are we close to exceeding the, our permit levels?
Matt's lawyer has advised him not to.
Discuss that, thank you. Yes, Gay?
May I comment?
Yes, you may, please. You have five minutes.
Gay Infanti, Salving resident. Two comments. One has to do with nitrates. I read a lot about water in California, and it's my understanding that the nitrate contamination is coming from agriculture. So I'm not sure what we could do as a city since most of us aren't farming. I think that problem, the groundwater's getting contaminated from fertilizers and so forth, and then it's coming back up in our wells, I guess, and then maybe it's going through our sewer system. But we need to do something in the valley about nitrate contamination by, you know, dealing with it as original source. And my second comment has to do with ID one. And a discussion that took place at the meeting that I talked about here a couple of meetings ago. And this discussion has to do with the Santa Inez Community Services District trying to get people off their septic systems and onto water, you know, sewer system that the Community Service District provides. And the reason for that is those septic systems are contaminating groundwater. Well, I've been hearing from people who live in Los Olivos and Santa Inez, they've been contacted by the Community Services District, told how much it would take to put in a better septic system versus what they would have to pay to hook up to the sewer. So they're all dealing with that right now. So there's an active movement afoot to get all those people on sewer. And is that sewer discharge going to go through our water treatment plant? Because that's going to make a much bigger amount of effluent, I guess you call it, going through our water treatment plant. And we will definitely have to do something to renegotiate that contract with the Community Services District.
No, it won't, not Los Olivos. Not at this time.
They're part of Community Services District and...
No, they're not.
No, they're not.
They are part of, they are part of ID one, they are not.
Well, okay.
They are not part of Community Services.
Okay, but they're being, they're getting the same information in the mail.
But they are, as I'm, they are actually looking at a, they're being forced, I won't say forced, but they are, as Los Alamos did about ten or fifteen years ago, Los Alamos was for years on a septic system. And I won't say, it's probably even close to twenty years now, but Los Alamos, it was actually forced to put in a sewer or a waste treatment plant. And the, several years ago, I went to a meeting, and at the time, there were two major red dots on the state water quality map that they were really looking at. One was Los Osos, the other one was the Los Olivos. The Los Osos one has gone through, and they're in the process. I don't know if it's come into...
I'm now general counsel for the Los Osos Community Services District. The sewer treatment plant is built, it's operational.
So.
But that was a huge, expensive mess involving.
FPPC and all sorts of, it was a mess.
The Lawyer's Full Employment Act was fully involved.
But the, but the big, the big dot, the big red dot now on the state water quality is Los Olivos. That is a, and there's, and if you take a look, several of the projects that are proposed out there are actually contemplating putting in their own waste treatment plant for, just for their, for their project. Because there are, there is a major problem out in Los Olivos due to the location of the hard pan. And I know for, when we've had wet years out at the Fest Parkers Grand Hotel, or whatever the hotel's called now, they had an elevator there that the elevator shaft penetrated fairly far down in the ground for the, and in wet seasons, the groundwater was coming up. And part of the groundwater that was coming into the pit of the elevator shaft was affluent from neighbors' septic system. So they have a, have a very major problem with that. And the drainage out of Alamo Pintata Creek coming right out of, that runs through Los Olivos. If you, if they, in rainy seasons when water's coming out, they do have a problem with a number of different things, and high nitrates is part of it. As it goes downstream, it does get diluted with other, but it's, I had a friend, his child several years ago did a science project on the water quality of Alamo Pintata Creek in Salving, and it was not good.
Doesn't make me feel good about our new wells on the creek. Okay, well, I just think we should keep in touch with what the other communities are doing, especially those that might send things our way to our water treatment plant, so thank you.
Thank you, Gay. Some background to that is the county is forcing Los Olivos and others into removing their septic tanks because they're failing. And they have a product, they have an acronym called LAMP, L-A-M-P. It's local area something or other, but it's, it's a process where if a septic tank fails, they're required to spend roughly forty thousand dollars per unit to reestablish the septic system. And also, or it's going to, when the sewer system goes in after the fact if they've spent the forty thousand on their septic upgrade, they'll have to go into the sewer system for another forty thousand. So there's a real quandary with the folks, whether they should wait until the sewer system is there and then go in at forty grand or spend forty grand and hope that the sewer system doesn't come in. So, and, and the CSD is a part of that process within their new expanded properties. And also, they're trying to expand into Los Olivos. There's a, there's a conflict going right now between the, a group in Los Olivos that wants to create their own Community Services District. And they're doing studies now, and this is from LaFco, by the way. And they're doing studies now to determine whether they can, they should go as a standalone CSD or join the Santa Inez CSD. So in either case, we're going to be responsible for some extra effluent that we have to handle. So I hope that we can make CSD understand that they should share the burden that we have to share as far as TSDs and sodium and chlorides are concerned, as well as nitrates. Is there any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. And good luck on this.
I'll start. And, you know, I'm reminded of our water treatment plant that we were looking at down on Alisal, down at Alisal Glen. And at the time, you know, we were going, basically treating the, you know, the river water. And the comment was made that we needed X amount of room for future water softening. That that comment was made. I believe it was at that meeting down there. So we're not going to go into every garage and see what people have or don't have. I'm wondering if we look at the treatment. There's going to be cost, there's going to be cost one way or another. You know, fifty bucks a month to Culligan or fifty bucks a month to the city. They'll probably happily pay it to Culligan, and we're all going to get strung up for charging them fifty bucks more. But but at least we'll be giving them a steady stream of soft water rather than, you know, Uncle Joe and the fourteen kids show up and you got two days' worth of water, and then you got to wait for another twelve days. So I think it would be worth pursuing. Also, with more stringent requirements coming down the road, I'm sure we can design a system to take care of some future, some future problems. And I don't know if I misunderstood what the Culligan representative was saying. I don't know if I misunderstood, but it seemed to me that you would have a hard time supplying everybody. I think we ought to look at it. Treating at the wellhead. You know, it's a million five, you say, plus annual operational and maintenance costs? I'd like to know what they, I'd like to know what they are. A million five, is, how many years is that going to take us out? What can we amortize it over? Let's run the math on it and see how it works. That way, it's no question. We're not going to give rebates. You know, why are you guys even going to hook up the Culligan? Or why are you even going to put salt or sodium, potassium chloride in your tank? Because you're getting sweet water coming in. You're not going to go out and spend the forty bucks or fifty or a hundred or whatever it is. You're going to be getting sweet water. So let's take a look at it.
Any other comments? Mr. Zimmerman?
I have one concern. If we vote this in, you know, is it something that's just kind of like we feel better about and we're just going to like leave it alone and not do anything else from there? Because I don't think this is actually going to solve the problem. You know, and if we pass it, then we don't actually do what may need to be done, which is a treatment facility or, you know, temporarily at the wellhead. Or, you know, maybe there's other alternatives that make it more of a real, permanent, you know, actualization rather than, you know, look, we made this effort, but no, you know, no real change in the use. So, yeah, that's my only concern with moving forward is basically it puts everything else aside.
Comments, any other comments? You know, this idea of the, that Hans is suggesting and that, and the fact that the suggestion of grandfathering existing softwater, regenerating softwater systems, might be a compromise that we set an ordinance that allows grandfathering as of a specific date, whatever date it is, on the condition that we look deeper into other aspects of water delivery, i.e. the treatment plants, the wellhead softening and/or the wastewater treatment plant softening. That's my suggestion, that we take action on prohibiting any more water softeners, and then we look into other avenues of treating the water that comes into the city.
Would you like to have a comment? Excuse me, Mayor Richard, I was just going to make a suggestion. If you want to, if this council chooses to go in that direction, rather than implementing any rebate program initially, we could, at the mid-year, propose, get some proposals to do a conceptual study and more detailed cost estimating for putting in a treatment system at three or four of the wellheads.
That's a good idea. I see no reason for a rebate system if we're not going to insist on changing out.
Right.
Water systems, that we just go ahead and grandfather in existing softeners, and then, like you say, do a study on another form of treatment of water.
But not allow new ones.
I'm sorry?
But not allow any new ones.
Not allow, we can allow new tanks, tank exchange systems, but not any self-generating water system, water.
Yeah, I can buy that as long as we've, as long as we've got, we've got a goal, we've got a time goal, that we're going to be getting information or we're going to be able to speak about it or take action on, on water treatment. So it just doesn't slip away and three years later is, oh, wow, maybe we ought to take a look at this again. So I'd like to see some definitive, that we're going to have some come back in three months, six months, whatever.
Well, as you're aware, we're, we've started our water and sewer rate study. So we could actually, uh, try to expedite doing a conceptual study, looking at a couple different, uh, alter- treatment alternatives, looking at the costs, uh, the O-N-M, O-N-M costs as well, not just the capital. And then, uh, what, what appears to be the most economical, uh, system, plug that in to the rate study, so you could see with that treatment, uh, implemented within the next five years, or without the treatment implemented, how that affects the water and sewer rates. And that way, you can see the effect of that, uh, to the, to our customers. So...
Yes, right.
I'm sorry, but I, I just wanted to give a little reality therapy for everybody, because it wasn't that long ago that we actually had proposed a project that would've treated water before it went into the system, and we couldn't go forward that project because of community opposition.
Just a location.
I understand, but a- any, any treatment plant is going to have to be located someplace. And, I mean, this is a beautiful place to live. I, I don't know of many places where you could put something that isn't gonna affect somebody. So, so people have to be, the community has to be committed to the idea that this is the right thing to do. It's going to have to go someplace, where's the best place, a- and deal with it. Because right now, we're just dealing with it in the abstract as a good idea, 'cause everybody would love to have good soft water. When we get to the other end of the project analysis, there are gonna, there are gonna be people who didn't know we were thinking about it, certainly didn't think it could happen anywhere near them. We have to think about all those things now, so the, the pain is limited as much as possible.
Th- that's, that treatment is a, is an option, as a, as opposed to wellhead treatment, too. You know, we don't-
You still, you're still gonna have to have a ma- if you do a wellhead treatment, you're still gonna have to ma- major, um, infrastructure at the wellhead. You just can't just put a wellhead and put a little treatment. There is, it's gonna be a large-
Stand-up, but we don't know the con- we don't know the infrastructure required in those, in those treatment places.
Right, right. The wellhead treatment has a much smaller footprint than the actual conventional surface water treatment plant that we were, uh, contemplating-
Right. That's what I was thinking.
For the river water. So it's, it's much smaller, but it's definitely, uh, and it would be right next to the well. So there's already sort of this industrial kinda looking facility there, uh, because of the well being there. Um, and so there's fencing and screening and things like that, planting, landscape planting and stuff that can be, can be, uh, implemented. Uh, and none of these facilities produce really any kind of noise. It's all just water under pressure flowing through different, um, filters and things like that, so...
I have a question for Arlene.
In what capacity?
In what capacity, as our planning director and having to deal with, uh-
Deputy city clerk.
Deputy city clerk today, uh, in regards to, uh, are permits required for installation of, uh, uh, water conditioning systems? Because if we are going to quote-unquote prohibit the generation, further installation of, uh, self-generating, uh, uh, softener systems, how are we going to regulate that? If we don't, if it's, if it's, if we don't have a permitting system for, you know, a person who has a conventional, uh, re- you know, replacement tank could say, hey, I don't want the replacement tank anymore, I wanna go with the, uh, purchase the, uh, self-generating system from Culligan. And the gentleman from Culligan, he's gonna say, okay, I have a fifty dollar a month customer who's in the, uh, tank replacement, and he wants to spend six thousand dollars on a new self-regenerating plant. Okay, I'll sell him the six thousand dollars. How are we, how do we, how do we, uh, enforce the, uh, prohibition on, uh, self-generating plants?
You know, if the work requires a plumbing permit, they would go through our department, and if it doesn't, we don't-
Right, yeah, because there's-
We don't specifically just track the water softening system.
Right, because I, because currently in my house, I had, uh, Culligans for a number of years, and I don't have Culligan now. Uh, matter of fact, I don't have anything with, and with state water, my, I'm very pleased with my water quality. But, uh, if I decide I wanted to, uh, put in a, uh, self-regenerating, I have all the piping there, and all I have to do is hook it up. So, what, you know, if somebody has to put new plumbing in, yes. But if it's somebody's going from a re- a recharge tank to a self-generating system, we have absolutely no control over it. So, by having your outline, it, no, yeah, we're outlined, but what, what type of, uh, enforcement do we have on this?
Well, if you look at paragraph C on the proposed rate, and paragraph B on the current ordinance, says that, uh, we were, we're allowed to inspect.
Yeah, it, it, that's true of all code enforcement. So, there are, there are many codes that, uh, people have to follow, um, and lots of people that sometimes don't follow them. And so they, they bubble up when we find out about them, uh, and we can enforce them. So in the abstract, uh, if we find out, we can enforce. Uh, if we have reasonable suspicion, uh, we can get an inspection. Uh, but we, it, it, it's not a proposal that we run around and inspect everybody's house all the time. It would be like any other code enforcement process. So, the, the same logic applies with, I mean, just, whatever our codes are, there's a certain percentage of people that aren't gonna follow those rules. And some of them do get away with it, because, uh, we don't run around kicking in doors to check everybody's house for compliance with every single thing. Uh, we have a, basically a complaint generator, or if something happens that we notice, a code enforcement. So, um, that's a legitimate question about code enforcement, but that's been the policy balance throughout the years that I've been here, is we don't go for the active code enforcement process.
Sorry, keeping the, we'd keep the honest people honest, and the dishonest people hiding.
Hey, um, I, I've got a question for Matt. Um, as, as far as exceeding limits, um, of, of wastewater, you know, uh, salts and whatever in it, um, are there fines involved for the city?
Yeah, yes.
What, like, like, uh, six-figure, seven-figure, um?
Yes.
And, and so this is something we also have to figure, figure in the equation.
Correct.
Um, because that's gonna go on the rate payer also. You know, we get a, we get a two-million-dollar fine or something like that, because we've exceeded, and we've done crap on, uh, builtin' for long enough, then, um, um...
Right, no, that's very-
You know, it's, it's gonna go on our rate payers.
That's a very good point, so we do have to-
So, let's, let's factor that in.
Think about that, yeah.
Factor that in as a potential cost.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else with comments? Then, uh, does somebody want to propose a motion to at least get this thing rolling?
Well, I think we kinda started, didn't we? That, that we were going to grandfather, that we were not gonna allow new, um, units, uh-
Regenerating units.
Yeah, regenerating units. Uh, if somebody wanted to switch over to Culligan, that's fine. Uh, but we're gonna take a very serious look at, uh, the city, uh, taking care of the, the, the soft water, uh, whether it's through wellhead, or whether through, um, a full-on plant, um, somewhere along the line.
And that can be accomplished during the water rate study, you say, Matt?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Along those lines, I think, uh, if a motion was, um, staff recommendation number one, as modified tonight during the staff report and discussion, um, but not, um, the, the second and third staff recommendation would not, in that way, would not include the rebate program, and it wouldn't-
Right.
-require any discussion at this point in time with the-
I, I wonder if the item three, though, direct to coordinate with the CSD, as far as reducing, uh, asking them to join us in grandfathering in current, uh, current softeners.
I, I, I think we should start by reaching out to them, and saying, hey, this is what we're doing. Um, you do it, too? Huh?
Actually, might have a job on my committee, Eddie. You, too. We might have something going here. We just, we just go and sit and listen.
Yeah, why don't, why don't you, why don't you go ask him, Joanie?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll put it down, and Joanie will ask.
That's my committee, I'll do it.
All right.
'Cause I only have five and a half meetings left here.
CSD meeting, you talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
So, is that, that enough information for, uh, for a motion, then?
We, we see nods at the staff table. We think we understand what the motion is, yes.
Can, can you, uh, can you restate that somehow?
Yes, I understand that the, 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 the motion is staff's recommendation number one, as modified here tonight. That would be the grandfather, the grandfathering of, of existing units.
Okay, now-
And that although we're going to reach out to the CSD, we're not gonna, we're not gonna start formal programs for, uh, items two and three.
And no more regenerating units.
Right, that's the staff recommendation, that, that no more regenerating units.
Now, uh, as modified, does mean this paragraph A of the ordinance is eliminated? 'Cause it says, "No person shall allow or permit any water conditioning to discharge into the city."
Correct, it's, it would be, the existing ones would be grandfathered.
Just, but, uh, paragraph-
Except as the, it would say, except as-
Except for yours.
Except for, except, exactly, yeah, thank you.
So, yeah, you, you have to, you have to set a good example for everybody else.
I am. I'm going to grandfather mine in.
It would just say, except for units existing as of today's date.
As of-
No, no person shall allow, and that would prevent-
Okay.
-future units.
The motion was made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Now, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Councilmember Jameson?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
No.
Councilmember Skip? And Mayor Richardson?
Uh, yes. That was a four-one vote. Passed. Thank you all. And, Don, thank you very much for coming by. I really appreciate you sh- being here. Your, your input is valuable. Thank you. Onto item, uh, number ten on the agenda. Or do we wanna take a quick break?
I need to stretch.
All right. We'll take a quick break.
Anybody know?
Does anybody know how the Forty-Niner game is doing?
You wanna ask, Al?
No.
Hey, Siri.
Always training.
What is the score of the San Francisco Forty-Niners? I asked Siri, and she told four of them.
You want to ask who's playing?
All right. We return from recess. Back to item ten, please.
Item ten is refurbishing the turf at Solvang Park.
Staff report?
Happy to be back. Mayor and councilmembers.
Happy to see your smiling face.
Excellent. Uh, let's see, at its, so I will be brief a little bit about this on the background, but, um, as we all know, we are in a major drought, and stage-two drought regulations were adopted by the Solvang City Council. And so, as it affects the parks, we have been put on a fifty percent mandatory, um, irrigation reduction. And this six-year-long drought that has impacted the city's solving and its parks, um, and open spaces greatly. The continued drought and reduction of watering times to the park and constant foot traffic, plus the heavy use for the many annual special events and programs, have all impacted the turf's current condition. Uh, throughout the drought, staff has continued its regular maintenance of the turf, and has attempted a small variety of repair methods to restore the worn areas, including fertilizing and drought-resistant seeding, uh, to no avail, as is, can be noticed. Closing down the park, or even a small area, when we've tried this in the pack, is very challenging due to the heavy traffic. And in February twenty fourteen, staff requested a bid for a new ADA accessible ramp to the Solving Park gazebo. And by the summer of twenty fourteen, the local Vikings organization became involved after approaching the city council, wishing to donate a special display at the Centennial Plaza. Although the location was not approved, the concept was, and they brought it back and offered to do it in the park itself. At, at this point, staff has been meeting with the Vikings for well over a year now, and at one point, um, though they have put together plans for the gazebo and the ramp, they even talked about paying for improvements to the entire park, doing a new master plan, if you will. Um, but unfortunately, those improvements, though we have come up with them, it was determined that fundraising efforts would only be used for the construction of the ramp, and other possible improvements and upgrades to the gazebo, but not to any landscaping or hardscaping areas. As I mentioned, we did create a new master plan, and I believe you have that attachment, um, and essentially includes refurbishing the park, accounting for the drought, and consistent traffic within. In short, the hardscape would be increased in size, particularly in the busy areas, such as near the restrooms, and the picnic benches, which includes the area underneath the three Mayton's trees that are there, that provide the shade. The grass has always been a difficult thing to grow in that location. If we looked at just replacing some of the dead areas in the current grass, not the entire area, um, the replacement is between three to four thousand square feet. That's an approximate cost of twenty-one hundred dollars. And the estimated cost for increased hardscape is over sixteen thousand dollars. If we did, not in the staff report, but I did do the numbers, if we did the total square feet, square feet of the lawn, in the proposed plan, that's approximately twelve thousand square feet. So you can estimate the number to be probably about seven thousand dollars or more for new sod. Seeding the turf area is another alternative. In either instance, replacing all the turf area at one time would be difficult. Um, I would imagine it would take two to three stages at the least, and it would also be necessary to schedule it around the very busy times, which is just about annually, but certainly Eul Fest, Danish days, the summer months, would all make it impossible. As noted at the recent council meeting of August twenty-two, council could direct staff to not apply the drought stage-two reductions to the turf area in Solving Park. However, this would minimally affect beneficially the areas that have been trampled down to solid dirt. And it should be noted that areas, that the areas the Parks and Recreation Department are responsible for, have shown a forty-two percent reduction, that should read, in water usage for the first six months of twenty sixteen, as compared to the first six months of twenty thirteen. Three of the areas that we are responsible for share a water meter with a building and/or restroom. These include Solving Park, City Hall, and the annex building. We are unable to separate the use between irrigation versus domestic. If we were, or the, excuse me, the forty-two percent number would certainly be higher if we could, and if the same formula, same formula was used to determine the reduction without the three areas mentioned above, which are predominantly domestic use, it would grow to fifty-seven percent. Um, having done the math for the big three areas that we take care of with the most amount of turf, that being HCA, Vets Hall, and Sun- Sunny Fields Park, we're currently at a fifty-three percent reduction in usage. There are other improbable alternatives to alleviating the situation, including removing turf and replacing with drought-tolerant plants and a drip system, installing decorative bark in areas of turf that is, currently exists, or further increasing the existing hardscape. However, use of the park is predominantly by the tourists and locals for relaxing, sitting on the lawn, picnicking, et cetera, and is busy throughout the year, as I've mentioned, with the many special events and the tourism as well. And that is the end of the staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that I may.
Questions of staff report?
Yes?
Yes.
Um, how are your negotiations or your talks going on with the Vikings?
We have a, um, another invitation to meet with them, as well as include the city manager, and, and the last- And the last proposal they made, it seems like they are willing to pay for the ramp, but that would be only the ramp.
Any other questions? I had one, Fred, I had one on the new, on proposed plan.
Mm-hmm.
Next to the gazebo, to the left of the gazebo, you've got three green circles. Are those the trees that you're talking about?
Those, those trees, those Mayten trees that currently exist, we're actually, we're proposing to replace them with a better park shade tree, especially because of the root problems that are there. It's constantly lifting up the current concrete.
Those are symbols for trees?
Yes, they would be.
And then those little black squares in front of that, what are they?
Basically, benching, but we've also talked about taking a box-type planter or even a circular planter and including built-in seating around that with a tree in the center.
Very good. Go ahead.
Knowing the cost of artificial grass, I'm going to say, because somebody's going to come up and say, how come you, because they're putting artificial grass all over the place, how come the city of Solvang doesn't? And I'm assuming, did you even take a look at the price of artificial grass?
Not the actual cost, but I know it's quite expensive. There's problems with heat retention, which is certainly an issue. There are problems with the fact that it's petroleum-based, which is a concern for many people. It does provide good drainage through rain, but it still has to be cleaned after such things as pet use, et cetera. And of course, it doesn't have the same feel and smell of...
Real grass.
Fresh-cut real grass.
Yes, I do, I know that, but, and you hit all three things that I know about it. Looks very nice, or I utilize it, but it is, especially the heat retention, is very, very, it can be nasty, to say the least.
And for the sitting down, as much as takes place in the summer months, that would be tough.
Yes.
Do you have any particular recommendation?
To accept whatever you propose.
We want, we want to put it on your back, not ours. Do you see a, an advantage to any specific recommendation?
Actually, what I can tell you from my position as far as what I've heard from not only the locals but tourists alike, is that that is the one area of any area that is parks maintained that should be green. And so, that was brought forth, especially to my attention when we started doing the water restrictions, was that if we're going to keep anything going, turn the water off elsewhere, but try to keep that going.
In putting sod, sod is going to create problems that are less severe than if you seeded, no?
Both are going to take time. The sod would certainly be a little quicker, and you're going to have instant gratification. But they're both going to need to shut the park, part of the park down for a given period.
There'd be a time in the, in the yearly cycle that's good for that, where the minimum tourism? Is that what you're saying?
Minimum tourism, certainly cooler months versus the summer months, which obviously we'd want to avoid anyway because it's too busy.
And would it be selective replacement or entire, the entire green area?
Well, those are the two areas I talked about. We have currently about 3,000 to 4,000 square feet that would need something. Because there are areas, especially like to the north of the planter, closer to Mission Drive, which are pretty good. But that center, basically from the planter west towards the bathroom, that gets trampled considerably, as well as the area just outside the existing concrete underneath the Maytens tree, as well as that half-circle by the Hans Christian Andersen statue, people just naturally back up and off curb, if you will, and onto the grass.
Do you have a suggested staging method of doing that, of installing turf?
Other than a two to three phases, no. And I have looked up a couple of different types of possible sod, and certainly some are available out there that are both drought tolerant and heavy traffic.
Is it, is it going to be, do you think it'll be consistent with the old grass that'll still remain? Will there be like a line?
Yes, there would be a line.
And if we seeded, would there be no line?
In both cases, I think it would be fairly noticeable for a while. And for a while, that could be probably six months. But the other option is just increasing, if you wish to, take everything out, increase the funding, and put all new sod in or grass.
Did I miss those numbers, replacing entire?
I just, I'd mentioned that they weren't in the staff report, but you can take those existing numbers and about triple them, or maybe even quadruple them.
What about doing a combination, maybe of doing some seeding in the, would that make sense to seed like the, like oversee the areas that are, that have grass still kind of there and then also do the sod?
Well, those are what we've attempted in the past, to no avail. So, we have attempted that, but again, without shutting down the park. And I know for sod, it's generally considered to be at least three weeks before you go feet on, for seed possibly, well, probably much longer.
Any other questions?
The little green area that's over by, is that a grass area?
I'm sorry, I have a black and white copy, where are you?
Okay, I'm looking by the restrooms and the bus stop. There's a little green square. Why, why do we need to keep that as a, as a grass area?
We don't.
Why can't we just make that hardscape too?
You could.
What's, what's this?
Okay.
It's the best looking grass.
That's, that's the best looking.
What's this?
It's the best looking grass there.
Nobody walks on it, yeah.
Actually, there is a natural worn path just on the west side of the restroom there from people who do walk off the bus going around. And then, of course, again, just off curb or sidewalk at the bus stop. So, every place that we come into contact with foot traffic, it's worn. And it's worn regardless if it's a drought or not in those cases.
So, if we be placed it all with sod, it's how many square feet?
I came up with approximately 12,000 if you were to do this proposal with increased hardscape. And that increased hardscape, just to give you a concept, just west or on the east side of the restroom, which faces the turf, you're coming in about 15 to 20 feet. That's about where the Lego tent is on data shows, to give you a visual. And then where the benches are, it's about a 12 feet to the north bump into the grass, which takes us just past the drip line of the current trees.
And the cost for the hardscape? Is that, are you talking concrete?
The hardscape is approximately $16,500 for an increase.
And that's concrete?
That's exposed aggregate to match what's there.
And do you have a budget set aside for that?
Well, we do have $30,000 in our current budget this fiscal year. That money was going to be used potentially for some hardscape landscape improvements. However, we know at the least with the Vikings, we're looking at having to pay for engineering drawings. And until we finalize that and get that cost estimate, our $30,000 is going to be decreased. So, we would currently not have enough if I were to estimate those engineering drawings.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Fred.
Welcome.
Very informative. Now, we'll go to the public for comment. Is there any, any public comment regarding this issue? Fred?
Mayor and city council members, Fred Koval. That is your heart for the city. That's where everybody congregates. It, it needs to be fast-tracked. You need to add the money that you saved by the $65,000 lower sheriff's cost. You need, take that money and you need to apply it here, every bit of it. That's where that money really needs to go. This is where your tourism comes in. This, you guys just need to get going right now.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Who would like to speak first?
I'll speak first because I'm the one that pushed this. Like Fred, I hear from people like, what has happened to the park? You expect us to come to the movies and sit in the dirt. Our kids come home and they're filthy. There's no place to come and just sit under the trees. The tourists probably don't even bother to be there anymore, I don't know. And when you have activities there, it's like a dust bowl. I would really encourage the city council to approve doing the 12,000 square feet of new sod and the six, and whatever the hardscape is going to end up being, I don't know how many square feet that is. And we do have that, the money's from the sheriff's department. What we didn't have to pay, but we have used 20,000 of that already for the library. So...
Any other discussion?
I just want us to pay attention as a lesson learned and have a little more foresight in what we do and what we implement in the city. Because a little bit of a water savings has now cost us whatever this is going to end up being. And, yeah, that's all.
I agree with you, Neil.
Any other comments? Was that a motion that you made, Joni?
Sure, sounds good to me.
Is there a second?
Neil?
Want a second?
You want a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Can I have a, a voice vote, please? No, roll call, I'm sorry.
Okay, councilmember Jamison?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Skid?
Yes.
Councilmember Deuce?
Yeah.
And Mayor Richardson?
Yes, and that was passed with a 5-0. Are there any, yes, there is.
You didn't have your nap today, did you?
No, I did, because I just recalled that it's time for committee reports. And I know that there are some committee reports. Namely, the Schumash tribe, the ad hoc committee met with the Schumash tribe regarding the fire station. And we, we had, we had a good fruitful discussion. What were the total numbers, Brad, for the, for the total expansion for the fire station?
171.
171? And I don't know if I made a valid offer or suggested offer, but I'm wondering if I suggested, and they agreed, that we could pick up 100,000 of that. And in reflecting on it, I don't know that that's a fair amount to pick up. Being that the total price is 173 and we'd be picking up a majority of the expansion, I don't know that that's a reasonable amount.
It's actually, the construction was 171. They've, they've put up about 30, I believe, 35,000 for design, so...
So, roughly 200, then, is what you're saying? So, then that would be a fair amount then to pay roughly half.
And, and that would be coming out of the Indian Gaming money that we still have, if we can get it...
Reallocated through the county.
Reallocated from the pedestrian bridge.
Right.
But that, of course, is, is the county's decision, I believe.
Well, yeah, the committee was established by the county, the Indian Gaming Distribution Committee. And so, they're checking with the county to see if, one, if it still exists and if they can make that action, or if the county can make that action to allow us to reallocate that. Because as you know, the bike pedestrian bridge is now...
Right.
On hold, awaiting Caltrans decision on the full bridge replacement.
So, we should discuss the possibility of bringing that back as an agenda item to, to agree or not to agree on the, on supporting the tribe in the expansion of the, of the fire station. They have to go to their council and also get an okay to go along with the, the costs of expanding. Because there's more money out of their pocket for that, too. So, if we could bring that back as an agenda item for discussion next meeting?
We will. I'll bring back potential award of bid for the project with this funding mechanism.
Other than, other than that, is there any other council, any other committee meetings?
This isn't a committee meeting, but it's a, it's a comment. When we're dealing with the annexation, there are a number of properties that are already within the sphere of influence that should not have to be charged for going through that again. And then one of them is the Skid property, and the other is part of Buell Flat.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we were charging. What we're going to bring back to you is the cost for the process. And it wasn't, the intent wasn't to charge the annexed properties.
No, no, I understand that, but those, those partial, those properties should be taken out of any cost estimate as to what was going to go forward. Because they're already in the sphere of influence.
Are they in the sphere?
Yes.
Yes, there are several of those properties in the sphere. However, the next meeting, what we're going to recommend is that you keep them in the study so that you can see the financial and economic impacts of providing the services.
No, that's for the annexation aspect of it, yeah. But I just don't want, because they've asked me, they know they're in the sphere. And I provided maps that were, to Arlene, that were from LAFCO to show that.
Are there, are there any other committee reports? With that, we stand adjourned.
Fred, do we have an ID? When the new fire engine supposed to be in here?
Last, what?
End of October?
No, no, it's later, it's after the first of the year now.
Oh, so they're doing...